Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Monday, May 18th, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
Pledge of Allegiance to the
United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, First Selectmen's Report. Okay, the state COVID-19 database was offline this weekend. Hopefully, it will be back up today. The last positive case reported for the town of Darien was on 5:15 when we had one case reported. So as of today, we have a total of 199 cases, 15 hospitalizations, five deaths, and 96 documented recoveries to date. Case contact work continues by our local health department and nursing staff. Seven of the cases in Darien and two of our deaths are from assisted living facilities. You might have heard data in the public telling us that 70% of the deaths in Connecticut are attributed to long-term care facilities. Most of our local restaurants and retailers are eager to begin to reopen this Wednesday, May 20th, as per the governor's instructions and the reopen Connecticut guidance documents that were issued on May 8th. In order for the reopenings to be safe and successful, please follow all the guidelines required by our local establishments. Businesses are required to fulfill a self-certification that all the requirements for cleaning, personal protection for employees, capacity adjustments, social distancing, touchless amenities are all being planned for and to be followed. Businesses may impose other requirements of patients like wearing masks. So please follow these rules so that our local reopenings here in Darien will go smoothly and safely. To that end, Governor Lamont has recently disbanded the reopen Connecticut Task Force, who was tasked with crafting what was a four-phased plan to reopen Connecticut businesses and the one that we are following right now. As I said, the plan was published on May 8th, after which every local health department and local chief elected official have been working diligently with our local businesses to offer and support the requirements for reopening safely. On Friday, May 15th, the governor announced he was disbanding this task force in favor of hiring the Boston Consulting Group to take over the complex planning for reopening businesses. Local officials to date have no information about this. We only have read what we've read in the media, and we don't know what the impacts of this change in strategy and planning will be. Further, today, the governor announced he is rescinding his plan to reopen hair salons and barber shops on May 20th, saying he wishes to be in sync with Rhode Island's reopening policies. The Connecticut Beauty Association lobby group has pushed back on the reopen plan citing issues of lack of appropriate PPE, employees who are parents needing to help their children with e-learning at home, and not being able to come back into the workplace. I speak only for myself as Darien's First Selectman when I say that this is an unacceptable situation for our local businesses who are very well-prepared, under the guidance of our local health department, to open under the mandated guidelines. What we don't know, if there will be any further changes to the planned reopenings for this Wednesday for either retailers or offices or our restaurants, who are all prepared, who've been spending money to rent and erect tents and make alterations to their furnishings. So I am very eager to get more information from the governor, given these openings were to be happening in two days. That's the extent of my report. Kate?
Speaking of reopening, we are working on that here. Our plan at the moment is to reopen to public access on June 1st. It would be by appointment only. It's very important that it would be by appointment only. We still want to try and keep the public out of the main part of the building. We plan to, we already have actually set up workstations in Room 119 that are safely distanced from one another, so that if a member of the public needs to meet with a member of our staff, they can do that safely in Room 119. We have another room available in the Mather Center that can be used for meetings that need to be private. We are working on, the department has been working on their staffing plans. While we are not mandated to be at 50%, that's our target, is to be no more than 50%. So we're working on bringing back staff. Some will continue to work from home. We may be alternating, but those plans have been coming in all day, and once I have them all, we'll be analyzing them to make sure that it's going to work. As an employer, we are required to provide PPE for our staff when they do come back to work, so we are gathering an assortment of masks, both cloth masks, and we'll also be providing disposable masks. We are working on the cleaning. We have intensified our cleaning over the last several months. We will also be providing cleaning supplies to each office so that employees can manage the cleaning of their own personal workspace. Public Works has been doing retrofits in the various departments. If you were here, you would see a plexiglass screen in our office around Linda's desk where the public might come in and have access to her that is too close. We've also installed some, I believe there's one in the town clerk's office so far, but we're putting screening on all the public counters and in-between employee workspaces where they cannot be safely distanced. So that's a process, but Ed and his staff have been terrific. Tony Campanella has been really great with imagining things. Some of it might mean some moving around those workstations, but we're getting it done. Our fire marshal, Bobby Bush, has evaluated all of our public spaces and to recalculate the occupancy limits based on social distancing, so he's redone those, and he will be preparing signs for us to post, similar to what's posted up now. So I think that's where we are right now, and I expect we'll be putting out a press release sometime later this week with a lot more details, major detail that I left out. As we move to this reopening, limited reopening to the public, we will also be moving to the trial period for the flexible schedule in Town Hall. That means Town Hall employees will be working from 8:00 a.m. to 5:15 p.m., Monday through Thursday. We will be closed on Friday. Building inspections will still happen on Friday, but the rest of Town Hall will be closed. We are not going to do the late night Tuesday until we open to full public access. And one of the big things we'll have to be tackling over the next month is tax collections, and how do we safely allow those people who want to pay their taxes in person to do so? And that's it. I think that was a lot, but that's it.
Okay, thank you. So just to reiterate, put a fine point on what Kate said, beginning on June 5th, Town Hall will not be open on Fridays, starting on Friday, June 5th. Also, to clarify, even though the fire marshal has determined 50% occupancy levels, the governor has not changed his gathering size limits at this point, so groups cannot gather in more than five. So that is still the guiding principle at the moment. Okay, on to new business. We have one item of new business today, and this is in reaction to the ability for our businesses to reopen, for our retailers and our restaurants in particular, and this is to discuss and take action to authorize the First Selectmen to take certain actions on behalf of the Parking Authority. In Executive Order Number 7MM, it lays out a series of items to help facilitate the reopenings of restaurants and retail facilities, and among them is the requirement that restaurants can only be open for outdoor dining, and in order to help facilitate that, they're allowing for tents and seating to be arranged. I'm sorry, is everybody on mute? I'm getting a lot of feedback at the moment. Thank you so much. The restaurants and retailers are allowed to operate outdoors, and they can operate on sidewalks and in parking lots and roadways when that's been authorized to do so. So the town is in control of some parking lots, that the Parking Authority would normally be voting for any requests for the use of those parking lots, as we have done in the past. For example, when Bodega celebrates Cinco de Mayo, they have set up 10 in the parking lot behind their establishment, and we are in control of that parking lot. So it is for those areas that the resolution that you have before you, authorizing the First Selectmen, when acting in conjunction with the Health Department, the Fire Marshal, and appropriate zoning officials to authorize the use of those spaces for our local restaurants and retailers. Zoning has been accepting applications for quite some time to be able to do these things, and this will be one more way that we can help facilitate the smooth reopening of local businesses and for them to do it safely. So with that, I'll open to board questions about this resolution.
Jamie, hi, it's Krista. I don't have a question per se on the resolution, but is there any update from PNC as to what they're doing to facilitate this? Anything special on their end that you can share with us?
Yes, the approvals are administrative only, which means they don't have to go to the commission and be held to a commission meeting schedule. The town is not charging application fees for these applications. So we're doing everything that we can to make these approvals very quickly on behalf of our local businesses.
Okay, that's great. Thanks so much.
Yep. Other questions on this resolution?
Can you hear me this?
You're a little bit garbled, but try again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's a little better.
I'd like to know who caller number one is on the line. We have caller number one with the open microphone.
I believe that's Krista.
No, it's not.
Caller number one, please identify yourself.
Is that Jamie?
Nope, Jamie's showing as Linda. I can't get rid of them. I'm not an organizer, I can't get rid of them.
All right. I'm all in favor of this resolution.
Kip, you're caller number one.
I'm caller number one?
Yes, you are.
Why am I not showing up as Charles Coombs?
You're showing up twice. You show up as your, are you on your phone and on your computer?
Yes, but my computer shows a phone symbol only. I'm sorry. I talked with Jen about this earlier, and apparently, I'll have to come down and talk to you guys about it. I'm in favor of this resolution. As a matter of fact, David Genovese approached us about having a drive-in theater at the parking lot. We're all in favor of it. I haven't heard much more since then, but I think the idea is a good one. However, we can use the parking lot.
Thank you, Kip. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, I will, with your permission, waive the reading of the body of the resolution, but I will read the "now therefore" clause. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town and acting in its capacity as the Parking Authority of the town authorizes the First Selectmen, acting in conjunction with the Health Department, Fire Marshal, and appropriate zoning officials, to authorize and grant permission for the use of town property and/or off-street parking areas for these outdoor activities to take place, and the outdoor activities are defined in the body of the resolution. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Krista, so moved.
Thank you, Krista. May I have a second?
Second, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a whole series of meeting minutes. We'll start with the minutes of the regular meeting from April 21st. Any corrections or additions?
Esther, on page two, second to last paragraph of the whereas, line two, as a have, has, I think you just want has.
It's, we want to delete the word "has" in favor of leaving "have," right? Households have. Okay, thank you. Any other corrections? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. May I have a second? Kip, seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, meeting minutes from our special meeting on April 28th. Any corrections or additions?
On page one, under public comment, the second paragraph, the final sentence which begins, and maybe they will serve as, there seems to be something missing.
I can give my written comments. I'll add my written comments, which I have in my computer, supplement that in. Oh, this is from Kathy Barrett, so we have her email. We'll attach her email.
That's all you were putting there.
Any other corrections or additions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved, this is Kip.
Thank you, Kip. May I have a second?
Sarah, second.
Thank you, Sarah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, special meeting minutes of April 30th.
No question, other than on page one and page two, we have the three N's for deferral. Two of the defers are capitalized, are non-capitalized, and the third one is, we want to just have those.
We should capitalize them because they start a line. That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are no other, go ahead, Kip.
Page one, second paragraph, second paragraph, the word boards should be with apostrophe S, not S apostrophe S.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that should be capitalized.
I think it should be capitalized.
Thank you.
Whereabouts are you?
Second.
Oh, yeah.
Under, you see it? Okay. And then the third paragraph says, in the middle sentence, the middle line, she noted that this, I think you should say this deferral, also gives us the opportunity to start discussion how we fund the purchase of apparatus, I guess, in the future? I think that was the idea.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes as amended.
So moved, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Second?
Kip.
Thank you, Kip. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, and our final set of meeting minutes from our May 4th special meeting.
First part of this, isn't this a regular meeting, not a special meeting?
It was a special meeting because of the time.
Yep. Any other corrections or additions for these meeting minutes?
On page two, item seven, I think it could be a little clearer by saying, transfer from police salary accounts that have surpluses to accrued leave redemption.
Okay.
I agree.
It just makes a little... And I'm confused on page three, because it talks about doing and approving the minutes of April 21st, which we're just doing today.
Yeah. Ah.
I have to go back. It's Saturday, March.
It might have been March. I'd have to go back. Let me see, hang on a second. Let me just go back and look at the agenda from that.
April 21st, we were...
Yeah, it says April 21st. Let me just check the packet.
We're either approving the minutes again or whatever.
Yeah, they were the first, 21st, you've already approved those.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so I will, this stands, so there's no correction to be made there. What I will do, though, because we've already approved those minutes, with your approval, I will take a vote to eliminate the vote we just took on the minutes under item number two. So I'll make a motion to rescind the action we took to review and approve the minutes of April 21st earlier in this meeting. Thank you, Kip. May I have a second?
Sarah, second.
Thank you, Sarah. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot. That'll make it clean.
You still have to vote on the May 4th ones, though.
Yep, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 4th as amended.
So moved, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. May I have a second?
Kip.
Thank you, Kip. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, Kate, did we receive any public comments for today's meeting?
No.
No public comments. Okay, agenda review.
Jamie, can I tell you this moment, just have a question regarding Kate's report. Is it, may I ask that here?
Sure.
Kate, I just wanted to clarify, is it June 1st or June 5th?
So June 1st is when we will begin Phase 1 of reopening, and it's when the flexible schedule goes into effect, which means that June 5th is the first Friday that we're not open.
Oh, okay, okay.
I know, it's a little confusing.
Okay, so the Town Hall will not be closed on the 5th, and I did want to...
It will be closed on the 5th.
Okay, the first Friday, correct, that it'll be closed, yes. And could you clarify, unless this is still in the works, by what means will people be making appointments?
Telephone, email.
So you just call, you need to call the respective departments or the...
Yeah, they need to call the department that they want to visit or meet with, or they can email it, either, you know, either way. The other thing we've done is we have a sign outside of Room 119 where we currently have a drop box, and we'll continue to have that drop box, and the sign has all the telephone numbers, the main telephone numbers for each office. So if somebody shows up without an appointment and they need to meet with somebody, you know, they'll have the numbers right there that they can call and see if the person can come down and meet them, or if the, you know, department says no, you know, come back on another day.
Okay, and for anyone listening in who may not be familiar, 119 is the room that is right sort of across from the gymnasium, correct?
It's, I would call it next to the gymnasium, but yes, yeah.
You enter the building...
If you're not familiar with our building.
You enter the building over the bridge.
Correct, right, just to clarify for people coming in.
Okay. It's the one that's in no man's land, between Town Hall and the Mather Center.
Exactly, so people will wander in the main door and start, you know, wandering around just to help direct people. Okay, so we just call on the respective departments, because I'm thinking beach passes, people, they want to start coming in, that's what prompted my question.
Yeah, so for one, the main door won't be open.
Okay.
People can wander around. But beach passes, we are, boy, we are going great guns with those right now, and we are working on ways to eliminate the need for people to come to Town Hall, or if they do need to come to Town Hall to streamline that process.
Could you elaborate, what do you mean by that?
Well, you know, maybe a thing, Parks Mark hasn't given me their details yet, but I've suggested things such as, you know, if you decide to try and buy beach passes this morning to go to the beach this afternoon, maybe we have a certain pickup time where you buy Town Hall and they're available for pickup during certain hours. I don't want the staff to have to keep walking down to 119 and walking back. So we're looking at doing that kind of thing.
That makes a lot of sense, Kate. That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, they've been, people have really been buying a lot of beach passes.
Yeah, they've been, people have really been buying a lot of beach passes. They're working very hard down in Parks Mark to get them all out and in the mail.
No, I did see, like, for the seven to 10-day mailing, that would be great if there's any other way to expedite that for individuals to go online, because they may not think of it, a week's cost in advance.
Yeah, so I've asked Parks Mark to consider how they might efficiently do that and not, you know, make it easy for the public and easy for the staff.
Perfect, yeah, absolutely, reflecting both. And is there a possibility we just comment on the beaches for, you know, this weekend, of course, Memorial Day weekend, kind of where we are with beach staffing and passes and on that, with Jamie or Kate?
Well, staffing, there will be no lifeguard. The gates, you know, we do have, we have hired the security company to operate the gate. There will be police presence as much as possible, and we have security personnel that are tasked with not just the beaches but the parks to ensure that people maintain safe social distancing, and just to say to the public, it's up to you to keep the beaches and the parks open.
We will be...
Concessions, restrooms, you want to update on that?
There's no concessions this summer, and the restrooms will be, hopefully be open by Thursday, so we won't have to use the Port of Johns anymore. The reason why the restrooms weren't open when the beaches opened is because the restrooms had to be sort of de-winterized, and that took some time.
Okay, wonderful. That sounds like great news for Darien to enjoy the beach if weather permits this weekend.
Yes.
Great, thanks so much.
You're welcome. I want to, just also for the public, if you do have to come to Town Hall by appointment, you will be expected to wear a mask while you're inside Town Hall, and you will also be expected to utilize hand sanitizer when you enter the building. So we're doing as much as we can to make sure that the environment is safe for everyone. Are there any other items for agenda review?
I'm sorry, it's Krista again. Now, this is actually related to agenda review. At our next meeting, or can we get an idea as to the plan for the re-initiation of in-person restaurant inspections, unless in sort of the when, but what terms will dictate that now it's hopefully restaurants reopening on Wednesday for outdoor dining, which is wonderful news, what is the plan as far as the health department goes?
Anything else? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. May I have a second?
Krista?
Thank you, Krista. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions, motion carries. Have a good afternoon, everyone.